Lee County Board of Commissioners, meeting in order. Okay. Called to order. All right, please rise for the invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, as we gather to engage in the business of Lee County government, we ask that you lessen the burden that this pandemic has placed upon our citizens, our health personnel, our law enforcement, our first responders, and our firefighters. As all have endured hardships, we ask for the miracle of the vaccines to vanquish this dreaded virus. We ask that you comfort those mourning the loss of loved ones, and we ask you bring a quick recovery for those suffering the effects of this virus. As we look forward, the Book of James reminds us, quote, "Let every man be quick to hear, slow to speak, slow to anger; for the anger of man does not work the righteousness of God." We ask of these things in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. As I'm looking at the agenda, are there any additional items to add to the agenda? Seeing there are none, moving right along. Next item is the approval of the consent agenda. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if we could get approval on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely. All those, do I hear a motion on the?
Moved to approve.
Motion has been made to approve the agenda as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried Madam Clerk. Need a motion, any questions on the approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as written. Are there any questions? Seeing there are none, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, carries. Public comments? We have public comments. We have Paula Fine. Please come forward. Welcome. Please state your full name and address for the clerk. And you're more than welcome to remove your mask when you're speaking at the microphone.
Thank you. I am Paula Fine in Buangie, 2012 Belford Drive. I would like to say thank you to all of the commissioners here for allowing us to speak. And I would like to bring my opinion about the "In God We Trust" and putting it on our government buildings. I am assured that every single person in this arena today is old enough to remember when "In God We Trust" meant something to us. And I would like to just offer my opinion that it would be a wonderful opportunity for our commissioners to put forth this effort to put on, back into our government, "In God We Trust," in the times that we are suffering right now and what's happening all over the country. You have more people than ever praying and paying attention to what's happening in our government. And going through social media today, there was so much, so many calls for prayers and wanting unity that I think that Lee County within itself would be just wonderful to put forth such an effort to put this back into our government, just to say, "In God We Trust," and God bless you, and just bring a feeling of togetherness, togetherness and prosperity to our county. So if all possible, I would like to see that happen. And I'm not speaking just for myself, but for friends and my neighbors who actually have said God bless you in more times in this last past week. And I want to thank everybody again for allowing me to speak, and God bless you all, and God bless Lee County and the United States of America.
Thank you, ma'am. I understand we have a emailed comment.
That's correct. We had an email sent by Reverend Bruce McKinnis at 1611 Carleton Road. He says, "To the Lee County Commissioners, I could not be present at the January 19th meeting, but would like to speak as a citizen of Lee County NC and ask that the national motto "In God We Trust" be placed on the County Courthouse Administration Building and Legislative Chambers. It seems to me that the places which should have our national motto emblazoned upon them should be the places where the most important decisions are made that affect the people of our county. The national motto is a reminder of our country's heritage and her dependence upon Almighty God for guidance, protection, and blessing. It is fitting, and it will come at no financial cost to our county. Please consider the proposal from National Motto Organization, but to approve their offer." Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Under Old Business, and the first topic on Old Business is the request to apply "In God We Trust" motto on the exterior of certain county-owned buildings. And I wish to call Mr. Ricky Lanier to the podium, sir. And you're more than welcome to remove your mask.
Thank you, Chairman Smith.
And do we have the, I would like images up front?
I'd like to follow up on what this kind lady said just a few minutes ago. Our organization was founded right after the attack of 9/11. And the inspiration for it was when the great Billy Graham was on the U.S. Capitol steps right afterwards, trying to bring our country back together. And his words, if you look up his speech that day, was a reminder to our nation of our trust in God. And that was 2011. And then in 2002, we voted in Davidson County to put it on our building. And of course, we're challenged with a federal lawsuit. And it was challenged, appealed all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court. We won. They lost. Have not been challenged since, and now have 101 entities, 57 counties, and 44 town halls. And we hope after tonight's meeting, y'all will be number 58 in North Carolina. I'd like to begin by saying, honorable elected officials, thank you for placing us on your agenda tonight. It's my pleasure to come before you. This is an invitation to join the growing list of cities and counties that are voting yes to proudly and prominently display our national motto "In God We Trust" in and on their government buildings and law enforcement vehicles. My name is Rick Lanier. I'm co-founder and field director for the U.S. Motto Action Committee. I served as county commissioner in Davidson County from 1998 to 2002. In 2002, I led my Board of Commissioners to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" on the exterior of our governmental center. Soon after that, several cities and counties began to join us in doing the same. We formed the U.S. Motto Action Committee for the sole purpose to promote patriotism by encouraging elected officials like yourself to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" in and on their governmental buildings. Displaying the motto gives ceremonial honor to public occasions, and it expresses confidence in our society like nothing else. These words have been used on our U.S. currency since 1864. This inspiring slogan is engraved above the entrance of the U.S. Senate Chamber, as well as above the Speaker's Seat in the U.S. House of Representatives. On July the 30th, 1956, during the Dwight D. Eisenhower administration, the U.S. Congress adopted "In God We Trust" as the official national motto of the United States of America. Thus, displaying the motto is a legal right protected by our great First Amendment. On November the 1st, 2011, the U.S. House of Representatives voted overwhelmingly, 396 to 9, to reaffirm "In God We Trust" as our nation's motto. That was back when Thomas Newdow in California, in the Ninth Circuit, was trying to challenge "In God We Trust" and our pledge to the flag reference to God to have removed. Congressman Randy Forbes of Virginia sponsored the resolution in part because some have mistakenly stated that "E Pluribus Unum" is our national motto. Most importantly, the resolution specifically encourages the placement of the motto in and on all governmental buildings and its states, from courthouses to school classrooms.
Excuse me, sir. I'm over here. Without objection, I'd like to offer a motion to apply for the "In God We Trust."
No objection. Any discussion? Could we read the resolution, please?
Sure. Resolution supporting the display of the national motto "In God We Trust" at the Lee County Courthouse, Lee County Government Center, and Board of Commissioners' boardroom. Whereas "In God We Trust" became the United States' national motto on July 30th, 1956, shortly after our nation led the world through the trauma of World War II. And whereas "In God We Trust" has been used on United States' currency since 1964. And whereas the same inspiring motto has been an integral part of United States' society since its founding. And whereas in both war and peace, these words have been a profound source of strength and guidance to many generations of Americans. And whereas the national anthem of the United States says, "And this be our motto, 'In God We Trust.'" And whereas the Declaration of Independence recognizes God, our Creator, as the source of our rights. And whereas in 2011, the United States of Representatives passed House Concurrent Resolution 13, which reaffirmed "In God We Trust" as the official motto of the United States, and supported and encouraged the display of the national motto. And whereas a number of our presidents have written or spoken about religion and God, with President John F. Kennedy stating, "The guiding principle and prayer of this nation has been, is now, and shall ever be, 'In God We Trust.'" And whereas the county desires to display patriotic motto in a way to solemnize public occasions and express confidence in our society. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners as follows: That it is its intent of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to permanently and prominently display the national motto "In God We Trust" at the Lee County Courthouse, 14,000 South Horner Boulevard in Sanford, North Carolina, and the Lee County Government Center at 106 Hillcrest Drive, Sanford, NC, and the Board of Commissioners Chamber, 106 Hillcrest Drive in Sanford, NC. The motto "In God We Trust" shall be installed and displayed in a manner mutually agreed to and writing between the Lee County Board of Commissioners and the U.S. Motto Action Committee. Lee County will maintain full ownership over the accepted donation and will have the right to move, remove, and maintain said donation. For as long as the U.S. Motto Action Committee is in existence, the county will issue the committee a notice of intent with a detailed explanation prior to any modification or removal of this accepted donation, adopted this 20th day of January 2021.
Motion has been made to accept the resolution. We've read the resolution. Any discussion? Commissioner Lovick?
I'm glad we're doing this. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
I hate the Ten Commandments got removed. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves, comments?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp, comments?
Yes, I'll be in favor of this.
Commissioner Lavalley?
Yes, I think today is a fitting day.
Commissioner Carver?
I just want to thank you again for what you're doing. It's important for people to stand up and make it known to everybody that we support the hand of God in what we do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there no other comments? Motion has been made to approve the resolution as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Lanier.
I want to thank you, Commissioner Reeves, for making the motion. I want to thank you, Commissioner Chairman Smith, for getting us on the agenda. I want to thank the rest of the board for your firm vote for our great motto, and looking forward to getting it on your buildings. And I would welcome any kind of information as you get comments from folks, good or bad, of what your comments are once it's up there. And I'm sure you'll have some very affirmative comments. And it's the lady, ma'am, what was your name? I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
I'm Paula Fine in Buangie. I'm actually the vice chair of the GNI here in Lee County.
Oh, okay. I was just greatly blessed with her words earlier, and it could not come at a more appropriate time for our nation. God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Have a safe trip, and we'll be in contact.
Thank you.
Take care. Next item on the agenda is the planning of meetings with the Board of Education. Madam Clerk?
I believe I'll let Commissioner Carver. I think he's been working.
Commissioner Bill?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a little bit of background. If you remember last meeting, I had proposed that we issue a letter to the Board of Education concerning students returning to school. And as I listened to the board, it became obvious that I think you had real reservations about not laying some groundwork so that the Board of Education understood we weren't trying to take over their business, and that we were meddling, or maybe we shouldn't. With those thoughts in mind, I advanced the idea, along with the chairman, to the Board of Education and Sandra Bowen, actually, recommending that we have a leadership meeting where we would get together with a few of the members of our commission here and talk about issues about how we can relate to one another, how we can encourage one another, how we can think about things that affect both of us, obviously, financial ones being at the top of the list also. And she agreed. And then Dr. Crumpton recommended, reminded us that we had to have a joint meeting annually with them, so we've scheduled that for the 15th of February. And my discussion with the chair, he is requesting that we make some inputs to him about items that we might want to discuss at that meeting. So basically, this item is for your information so that you know how we're trying to relate to the Board of Education in a way that would meet both of our needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have the date of 2nd February, leadership meeting at 15:30. It'll involve, I believe?
It'd be you and Ms. Lavellie Lear, and Dr. Crumpton, myself as liaison. And then on their side, it'll be their Sandra Bowen, and then Christine, and Dr. Bryant.
And that's at 3:30 on the 2nd of February.
Correct.
And then the following meeting will be on the 15th of February. It'll be a joint meeting held here.
Yes.
And we will start the meeting at 6:00 so that we can accommodate Dr. Connect and his schedule. And then we'll follow on with the county commissioners' meeting after that joint meeting. Do we need a motion on this, or is this just a proposal we've already discussed? No motion? Okay. For information only. Next item on the agenda, consider an offer to purchase the 6966 Sheriff Watson Road as surplus property.
That would be me. If you recall, at the October 20th, 2020 board meeting, the board had rejected the initial offer of $1,000. The taxable value of the property is $72,400. And this one, as I had indicated originally, does have a structure on the property. And what is owed on the property is $8,876.14. We've had had some inquiries on it. Did relay the rejection of the offer back to the original offerer, and they have come in and now made an offer of $8,900. So if the board chooses and meets the minimum bid requirement.
Who made the motion?
Dr. Connect.
Dr. Connect. Motion has been made to approve the purchase offer on Sheriff, excuse me, 6966 Sheriff Watson Road for $8,900 from Lydia Taylor. Any discussion?
I didn't understand. Was that a family member?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
And it'll have to be still advertised for upset bid.
Right.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor of approving the offer as a initial bid of $8,900 from Lydia Taylor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this is subject to an upset bid?
Yes, sir.
And what's the time period?
Once we advertise, it'll be 10 days.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It'll be in the advertisement.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the update on the Mary Margaret McLeod mural.
Yes, sir. I'll take that as well. I believe Ms. Whitmore was unable to attend the meeting this evening. If the board recalls, the board adopted an MOU with the Suzanne Reeves Literary Club, and since then, Downtown Sanford, Inc., working with Liz Whitmore and the Literary Club, picked the artist Christine Dalton. They came back to the board in the agenda package. You'll see that what the final project was going to look like that's going to be installed at the government center. We just felt that it was important to bring it back to the board's attention. They would like to start work in the spring, so if you start to see it, that's what's going on. And we also attached the contract for the mural. That is actually will be with Downtown Sanford, Inc., and then the City of Sanford Appearance Commission. But the last page of the exhibit does ask for Dr. Crumpton's signature, and that basically indicates that for, basically, there will be a warranty of 10 years that if any damage to the mural occurs, the up to $250, the artist will fix. Anything beyond that, when I asked Ms. Whitmore, she basically said that we would need to do, I'm sure, she and Miss Dalton lives locally and would, you know, work with us, I'm sure. And then other than that, we would just, DSI or the Historic Preservation Committee would fundraise. But we just kind of wanted to bring this back to the board so you all knew that it was about to begin installation.
Any other questions for Madam Attorney?
Do we have some concerns about the mural layout? Don't you, Mr. Commissioner Reeves, have some concerns about the mural layout originally?
About the layout?
Yeah, I think of making the doctor more prominent, I think, right?
Right.
They didn't do any changes to the original?
Yes, sir. What's on your agenda is the final. She did send me, I just didn't put it on the, oh, I'm sorry, that was my timer for the public comments on the watch. Or my timer for the morning. They did make those changes. And so what is on the agenda is the final version. Yes, sir. And I can email you the one that she sent originally if you would like to see that as well.
All right, that's for information only. New business. Project 4837-02-21, Lee County Parks Master Plan Change Order Updates. Santiago, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, commissioners. We have two updates for you today on two of our projects. The first one is for Project 4837-0121, which is our Lee County Master Parks Plan. We have three change orders in here. So good afternoon. The Development Services Department is recommending the approval of three change order requests in support of our project for the county parks' master plan in the amount of $52,981 to address improvements in OT Sloan, Kiwanis Park, and Horton Parks. Approval of this change work orders request is presented in the amount of, we're doing $600, $605 in Horton Park, and this for sidewalk repairs, $41,496 for Kiwanis Park for resurfacing of the second set of tennis courts, and the $10,880 for the demolition and removal of the second set of tennis courts over in OT Sloan. So at this time, if you don't have any questions, I would like to request a motion to approve the presented work orders in the amount of $52,981 to address improvements to the parks. And once these work orders, this change to the work orders correction, and once these change orders are received by the county, I'll present those to the county manager for approval, as agreed on by this board on 21 October 2020. If you recall, he will be able to sign those once you receive approval. So do you have any questions?
Any questions, the board? Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good.
Commissioner Reeves, any questions?
On the tennis court, do you happen to know whether or not, how much traffic is over there on a regular basis?
At the two parks, the courts are in such disrepair right now, we haven't had a lot of traffic.
Well, that would explain.
Yeah, the courts at Kiwanis Children Park, the ones that were, you know, proposing to resurface here, actually were going to be demoed and moved. And after talking with Joseph Keel, we decided to resurface and leave them where they are because it was a lot more expensive to move it. And those are actually the tennis courts that the pickleball players have been using.
Correct.
And been complaining about all the cracks, and it is dangerous. I've played a little bit on those courts, and it's easy to turn an ankle, so. I believe they would get more play if they were in better shape, both OT Sloan and Kiwanis Children.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Sharp, comments or questions? Commissioner Lavalley? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
None.
No questions? Do I hear a motion?
It's a move.
Motion has been made to approve the change order updates on the Lee County Parks Master Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, that change order updates carries?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next item is going to be Project 4836-121, Lee County Courthouse and Government Center Cameras and Alarm.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. We recommended the approval of proposed equipment contract between Lee County and Johnson Controls in order to provide cameras, as well as a burglary alarm equipment with monitoring, which we'll provide that contract once it's available, in support of the new registered deeds and the District Attorney's Office, which will be residing in the historic courthouse. The overall amount is $31,556, and there's a breakdown of the services. We'll have the historic courthouse will have roughly $12,913. That includes the security and the video. And the registered deeds will be $18,643. That'll be security and video. Again, once the monitoring fees come available, we'll present those, but those will be under regular monitoring fees. If you have any questions, sir, at this time, I request approval of the proposed equipment contract between Lee County Government and Johnson Controls in order to provide security cameras, as well as burglary alarm system with the corresponding monitoring in support of the new registered deeds and District Attorney's Office in the amount of $31,556. Johnson Controls has been identified under state contract A38A as a provider for security and fire protection services. Sir, do you have any questions?
Any questions, the board?
Just for the board's knowledge, we, you know, we on purpose do not bid this with the contractor because we can save money by installing it ourselves through state contract. So that's why it was not part of the contractor's contract.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the Project 4836-01-21, Lee County Courthouse and Government Center Cameras and Alarm System. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved, it is moved, is approved. Madam Clerk?
Thank you very much. A great day.
Thank you, sir. And for the information, just for all of you, if you are interested in taking a tour of all our projects, Mr. Geraldo will definitely give you a bird's eye view of all the projects going on, and thank you. Fiscal year 2021 and 2022 budget procedure calendar.
Good evening. It's that time of the year again. Each year, we develop a budget procedure calendar to serve as a guideline for the budget process. Attached, you will find the calendar that we've proposed for fiscal year 21, 22... twenty-two. This is not a firm calendar, is subject to change, especially with regard to the budget work sessions that you would like to hold. You can see that we intend to have all the departmental budgets in by March eighth. We'll be asking other agencies and nonprofits to have theirs in by March twenty-sixth. It is our intent to have in your hands by April thirtieth, the budget document that will be presented to you in the board meeting on May third, and that will open up the timeframe of which you will be able to work on the budget. We have several work sessions scheduled at this point. It is our understanding that the board's desire is to do a line item budget review, so we have scheduled several work sessions that you will see there, and then we hope that you will adopt the budget by June twenty-first, prior to the June thirtieth deadline. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. We may have to change some of the locations. Once you adopt the calendar, Ms. Gamble will start working on securing the rooms for us.
Thank you, Ms. Mentor. The motion, is anyone willing to make a motion regarding the budget calendar?
So move.
Motion has been made to approve the budget calendar as tentatively laid out by our Assistant County Manager, Finance Director. Any discussion? All those in favor of the calendar as laid out signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Calendar carries as passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on into the manager's report.
Yes, sir.
And December twenty twenty financial report, Mrs. Mentor.
Yes, sir. Attached, you will see the monthly financial report for the month of December twenty twenty. As I always remind you, sales tax runs three months behind. Tax collections as percentage of the budget through December twenty twenty are just point six-four percent ahead of the same time period last year, which says to me, we've done another great job of collections in the tax department. I will remind you, the reviewing is finitures, we use a target of fifty percent. Of course, on your sheets that you have, the percentage used includes encumbrances, so many of the departments appear to be over that. However, if you back those out, we still have some departments that are over. Governing Body, Finance, Strategic Services, Elections, and IT are over. Again, the governing body is due to the cost of the strategic plan and dues to various organizations. Finance is over due to the annual cost of the audit. Strategic Services is over due to maintenance contracts. Elections is over due to the cost of the November general election, and IT is over due to annual maintenance contracts and the costs associated with their move to Douglas Drive, so as the year continues on, you'll see those amount of overages dwindle, and by June, we'll be in good shape. You also have the capital project update as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty, in your package. Couple of notes for you, I did check with the Community College on the status of the two projects, still open with them. The Vet Tech, the last phase of that is underway, they told me, and they hope to have it completed by March. The Civic Center project, they have informed me, is complete, but we are still waiting for the final invoice from the Community College on that, and I did follow up with them on that today. So there will be some money left in those projects to transfer over to the General Fund to cover debt service, since those funds cannot be used in any other manner. So in the courthouse project, you can see, we have spent one point two million, or just over that, and we still have four point seven remaining park improvements. We've spent four hundred and three thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents. The majority of that was spent on let park. We're just now getting going on those park projects, the rest of that. And the LG, Lee County Government Center renovations, of course, we've only spent four hundred and four thousand, but that'll be, get moving as we finish up at the historic courthouse and the registered deeds building. Okay, any questions? That, okay, we'll move into sales tax. If you've reviewed the sales tax numbers, you can see that we had another outstanding month. We are looking at percentage growth of in excess of twenty percent for this month. I will say, though, last year, in the month that we're looking at, our sales tax receipts were reduced by sales tax refunds in a tune of three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So our numbers are skewed a little bit because of that, because this November, or the number month we're looking at, they labeled as November, it's actually October for us. We did not get hit yet, so we'll probably see that next month. So, but we still saw phenomenal growth, even if you back out that amount. We are up countywide, almost five hundred thousand dollars in sales tax receipts over last year. So we're gonna say thank you very much, and hope it keeps going, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very nice to have good information in this time. Any questions for Mrs. Mentor? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County manager's report, Mr. Dr.?
Yes, sir. We look forward to next week getting to discuss our finances in greater detail. It's a good time to be talking about them. It's a lot nicer to talk when we're doing well than when we're doing poorly, so we look forward to our conversation next week. On ongoing projects, the courthouse and Government Center renovations, last Wednesday, did a walk through the registered deeds building, the press was there, Sanford Herald was there with us to walk through, very impressed with where we were at that point. The contractor says that they are finishing up, should be two to three weeks to completion, and then we'll be working on punch list items there, and they will be moving over to the historic courthouse, which should not take a long period of time, so they have a good plan, and hopefully, since most of that work is indoors, they are hoping to have all of that finished around the first of April in the historic courthouse. They've also, we have begun some work at the Government Center, we have some things that we're doing for, pre-set up for them, and the main courthouse building and the Government Center buildings will take quite a long time to renovate, so in totality, we probably won't be finished with those two buildings until April twenty twenty-one, so you'll be hearing updates on those buildings for quite a while. Our park projects kind of moving along slowly at this point. If you've been to any of them, you will see that we have a big mud mess at most of them, and hopefully, things will dry out and we can get working again. But work has started at Horton Temple, OT Sloan, and Kiwanis Children Park in Phase One, and, you know, we have attached a timeline of all work that they, that the contractor, J.M. Thompson, has proposed with an expected completion date of August twenty twenty-one, so should be finished with most everything during the summer of those. One of the other projects that Commissioners may have seen going on are the, we're doing renovations at the OT Sloan Baseball Field. We're actually creating a T-ball park. It'll be a unique facility for Lee County. We have a lot of T-ball players, and this gives them the, their sole place to play, practice, and do whatever, so the parents will know where they go all the time, and like our other projects, it's a big mud pit right now, and, but we're still hoping to finish that by late March, and hopefully, we'll be able to start T-ball and baseball the first week of April. We discussed that today. We have some plans in place to begin baseball in the spring, and, Mr. Chairman, you'll be happy to know that we are going to propose starting doing sign-ups for a, some gymnastics the first week of March, which was discussed today. So small classes, small groups, but, you know, we understand we need to get folks moving again, and expect, you know, hopefully, at the end of February, we'll open that registration up and get people moving again, get our kids back involved. So I know the staff is ready, they've been ready. We've had lots of special projects done by the staff out at our parks, and I think they're tired of doing that, and they want to get back to doing the recreation part of things, so hopefully, that will, that will kick off. We did have the inter-local meeting with the city and town on January eleventh at the Enrichment Center. The agenda and the summary minutes are attached from the meeting, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that came from that meeting, or offer Mr. Smith the opportunity to comment if he would like.
Oh, on the inter-local agreements, or the meeting with the city and town and Broadway, very interesting, was very upbeat. The mayor presented a very nice report and accolades for the county for improving East Sanford as far as Temple Park is concerned and Horton. We did get into some rather contentious discussions regarding our fire departments and cohabitating with fire departments, as well as the ongoing annexation by the city out into the county, and we'll have some follow-on with that information.
And it was agreed that we would have follow-up meetings with the city, the Fire Advisory Board, and the fire districts to try to develop a plan for the districts going forward. It is not an easy thing, trying to manage the territories that they serve, especially in Northview, Deep River, and Cape Fear, is when their territory is changing as much as it is right now, so I wouldn't call the city's annexation random, but it is random right now, and it's making it difficult to provide not only fire protection, but police protection as well, who's supposed to go where, and so we voiced our concerns, and we'll have more discussions with them going forward. But overall, it was a positive meeting. Obviously, a lot of growth going on in the, in the city and the county at this time, and that's what's creating these issues, is the growth, so we asked for it, we got it, and now we get to deal with it, so should be fun going forward. COVID update, I want to thank the Herald for writing an article about my comments here because we got a lot of response quickly from the public. Happy to report that the Health Director has several volunteers who have stepped forward, who can do vaccinations for us. Matter of fact, we use some of them today, and we plan on using them going forward to help us. We also have gotten support from DHHS, the state, in helping us with staff to do our vaccinations as well. We had four of them at our mass vaccination event right out back here yesterday, and yesterday's event went very smoothly, I believe. Initially, in the morning, as Commissioner Sharp can attest, a lot of people decided to show up early, even though we recommended that they not show up early, and so they got to wait, you know, a long period of time, but by the afternoon, the afternoon group showed up when they were supposed to, and came through with, you know, less than thirty minutes per person, so, you know, I thought it wouldn't, I was out here yesterday afternoon, went great. Thank you to Reverend Estes for doing the traffic control yesterday, he did a great job. It's a great teamwork that is needed to pull one of these events off in the Sheriff's Department, Police Department. Yesterday, we had the State Highway Patrol out here as well, who we also vaccinated, so while they were there, we told them, if they hadn't had their vaccination, we'd go ahead and vaccinate them, so that was done, and it was a good event. Eight hundred and twenty people got their first shot yesterday, and so so far, we have a little over three thousand people who have gotten their first shot here in Lee County. Don't know that they're all Lee County residents, but I would tell you, the vast majority in Lee County are, Lee County, those shots are Lee County residents, so that's about five percent of the population, and, you know, we've, we've started doing some other little events at the health clinic. We did a hundred and fifty this morning of people that really are at higher risk, who have difficulty with transportation, or difficulty walking or getting around, so we set up an event at the Employee Health Clinic this morning, and did another hundred and fifty first shots for, for people that really needed it. So we're starting to develop a better plan, we're starting to get more help, now we just want to make sure the vaccine doesn't run out, because next week, we only going to have enough vaccine to do the second shots from the people three to four weeks ago, so no first shots are going to be done next week. So hopefully, the administration, the new administration that got sworn in today will address that and figure out how to, how to get more vaccine out, out to the public, or out to us, so that we can get it into arms, because we just feel like we're just getting rolling now, and now the, you know, now there could be a problem with supply, and that would not be a good thing. But, you know, I forwarded a report to y'all today about some of our stats and numbers, we're still trending about fifteen cent, fifteen percent positivity rate, but if you looked at our numbers, the number of tests were down drastically, and so hopefully, that means the total number of people who, who are getting the virus is going to start going down going forward, and it's interesting to look at the report I sent out, you can see the ebbs and flows, and then you can see the ebbs and flows around the holidays. Our numbers were really up since the end of November, but we, you know, this past week, saw the first tick down, so hopefully, that will continue, and as more people get vaccinated, the number of cases will go down as well, so today was a good day for vaccination, good things going on this week, so I apologize to all the people, all the public who are having problems with the phone lines, we're working on, on developing more capacity to answer the phones, but just to be honest with everybody, we are being inundated, and we're not the only county who's having issues handling the phone calls, so we're training additional staff, and hope by next week, we'll have double the number of staff that we have answering the phones, so going from eight to sixteen hopefully next week. And it's not an easy process, taking the information and then getting into the, the system called CBMS, you know, you have to be certified, and so we're trying to get additional people certified to do that for us right now. I think that's about it, there, you know, have the typical monthly reports, and then once again, look forward to seeing everybody next week at our budget kickoff and retreat next week. I think we have a good agenda Thursday night at dinner, both our Senator and our representative local will be here to discuss the upcoming legislative session, so that's always a good discussion with them, to talk to them about what they see getting ready to happen at the legislature, and always a good chance for us to communicate to them some of our concerns, and I want to tell you that I did communicate some of our concerns to Senator Burgen over the COVID, and within an hour, he had a call from DHHS, and those additional people were on their way to help us with the vaccine, so sometimes the squeaky wheel gets to squeak, grease, don't want to squeak too much, because then they quit listening to you, but sometimes you have to squeak, so thank you to him for what he did for us last week. That's my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Dr. Crumpton.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Last week, I mean, the last meeting, I addressed the Horton swimming pool situation, and I'm asking the manager, have we received any numbers on the pool splash pad combination?
Yes, sir, we have a couple estimates, and I don't want to steal Joseph's thunder for next week, but on Friday, I saw his report today, and he has an excellent proposal and plan for all the parks to show you next week as part of our retreat next week, but yes, sir, we have some numbers to consider going forward.
Okay, and when will we be discussing that issue?
Friday morning.
Friday morning.
Yes, sir.
Good enough, thank you.
Any other questions of the manager? All right, next item on the agenda is Commissioners' comments. I'll start with Commissioner Carver.
Thank you. Given that we just had a chance to celebrate the life of Martin Luther King, I was touched by reading some of his old quotes, and I want to read one to you, it's very short. "I refuse to accept the view that mankind is so tragically bound to the starless midnight of racism and war that the bright daybreak of peace and brotherhood can never become a reality. I believe that unarmed truth and unconditional love will have its final word in reality. This is why right temporarily defeated is stronger than evil." This is why right temporarily defeated is stronger than evil triumph." And as I reflect on these words, although he was addressing specifically the issue of racism and war which are real today, we also have so much tension in our country right now. And my feeling is that we in the local communities are going to turn the tide. We're the ones that have to be the examples. We're the ones that I think the Lord can use to demonstrate to people a better way. And this whole idea of unarmed truth and unconditional love are good targets, I think, for us. And I just ask your participation, which I'm sure you would be eager to give in such a, such an idea. And I'm thankful for his life and the kind of wisdom that's reflected here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Connect, comments, please.
We, we, the state has approved us. There were some questions calling about whether or not our inspections, we still have to pass admission standards. And so the state did pass that we are no longer have to do that. We just have to wait for the EPA to sign off on that. And so I don't know the timetable on that. So that's, some people have asked, you know, why are we still having to do admissions when the state has passed the rule that we don't have to for our county and other counties already have had this passed? We just have to wait for the EPA to sign off. And I don't know the timetable on that. Hopefully shortly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner LaValle.
Yes. Looking forward to our budget session in this time moving forward. It's, we have some good numbers to work with. And I also look forward to us implementing our strategic plan, but really focusing on really creating the plan. It's, it has the framework, but strengthening it, getting all of our input and having all the different departments be a part of it. So that's an important process moving forward in the years to come that will guide us. So I look forward to that. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, going back to yesterday where we getting the vaccinations, I was in line at 8:40. I was one of the ones that didn't do what I was supposed to and showed up early. 8:40. But I had my vaccination by 10:40 and I was gone from the parking lot at 11 o'clock. I think that's a pretty good improvement from the prior week where we had traffic jams, 80-year-old people calling me saying they had to get out of line because they sat for four hours because they couldn't hold their bladder, you know, things such as that. But I thought, you know, from one week to the next, it was a great improvement and hopefully, we'll get the process, keep on improving the process and become better each week that we have it. But, yeah, there was a lot of people out there working, you know, who had nurses, volunteers, sheriff's office directing traffic, so but everybody was worked good together and it was a good day, I thought. So another thing that is coming to my attention is the trash. I ride around all day long on my job and trash is everywhere, particularly Highway 87 coming into town and 421 from Willington coming into town. Trash is terrible and I just think it's a, not a good look for people coming, you know, people that don't, you know, for people that live here is not a good look and definitely people that don't live here, it just doesn't look good for us. And I would ask the county manager to elaborate on if we have people working on that or will be or what's the situation with that.
Yes, sir. We still have our crew working, you know, the part-time that we have, but the big thing that you'll notice right now is that the prisons have stopped using the prison labor out on the roads due to the COVID. So, you know, there are less people out there and, you know, the city was using some of that labor to clean up some areas that they were assigned to. So I didn't get a chance to talk to the city manager today about it, but I am working with General Services to make sure our crews are still hitting those hotspots. But I did notice it yesterday myself driving around town and then last weekend when I drove to Raleigh, US 1 from here to Raleigh was incredible, the amount of trash.
It's not only our problem. US 1 was terrible.
So, yeah, it's something we need to address and we'll see what we can do.
I'll be the one to be checking with Doc.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll call him about that.
All right. I was checking.
Lastly, I've had a couple calls about junk cars, cars sitting in people's yards, you know, like eight cars with no tags on them and things like that. And I don't know about the other commissioners, but I would like to see something, if possible, done and I'll let Ms. Parrish speak to that, what we could do or can't do.
Sure. I've done some initial research after talking to Commissioner Sharp and just for the board's reference, the individual who is calling about it lives in the ETJ, so that does complicate matters just a little bit. And for the board's reference, with the ETJ, the city zoning applies, but the county police power ordinances apply within the ETJ. Because we don't have anything related to abandoned or junked vehicles within the UDO, it would have to be something that would be passed by way of an ordinance under our general police power ordinances. There are general statutes that govern this. They do get a little convoluted, of course, because nothing can be straightforward. And I have spoken with the city, Barbara McMillan and Marshall and Amy. The city does have an abandoned and junked vehicle statute, but just so the board knows that who implement or enforces that is the code enforcement, city enforced, building inspector and the police department. The county doesn't have code enforcement, so, you know, something that we would just need to consider if the board wanted to move forward with anything about junk and abandoned vehicles. And it would be, it would be something that would need to be addressed countywide and, you know, I know that the expectations of people living in the county might be a bit different than the expectations of residents in the city limits. So I've done just initial research, so if there's anything further the board would like me to do, I'm happy to do so.
Yes, I saw the reaction of Commissioner Smith. I just remind the board, since I've been here, we've just had this discussion three times with previous boards and have not made it to a vote of the board yet when we discuss nuisance issues, not just abandoned vehicles, but we've discussed junk yards, we've done, you know, people just throwing trash in their yards. One person's treasures, another person's junk. And we also knock just weeds and all that other stuff. We've had these discussions and, you know, we have gone down that road. Be glad to go down the road again, but we would need to develop some type of enforcement mechanism. And when we've discussed it before, we, you know, since it was a trash-related issue, we had talked about using Joe Cherry and giving him help to enforce it. So I remember everything pretty well about those discussions because we did it three times and if the board's committed to it, you know, we're willing to move it forward and have further discussions. But remember, it was unpopular in the unincorporated areas before. I don't know that it would change, but be glad to go down that road.
Sounds like he's putting out a request for a motion.
I'm just, you know, if he wants us to do the work, we'll be glad to do the work and bring it back to the full board so they could review it. We've done it before. I'm sure we can resurrect it and, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to pass all the nuisances at one time. If the board just wants to take a look at junk cars, we'll just take a look at a junk car ordinance and go down that road. I'll make a motion at this time. We'll take a look at that.
Motion's been made to take a look at our ordinances or enforcing ordinances or drafting ordinances regarding junk cars. Any discussion?
Yeah, let's get a definition of what that means. My truck looks pretty rough, but it ain't junk.
The statutes spell out the junk motor vehicles and abandoned motor vehicles and it will just take some ti, I didn't, honestly, I didn't want to spend a, I didn't know how much time to spend on this before.
I wouldn't spend a lot.
Before I knew it was or not. This was something that the board wanted to do, so I'm happy to report back at maybe the next board meeting with more information with the statutes. Barbara did provide me the general statutes and I can provide maybe some more information as to what a proposed ordinance may look like and what it may entail, if that would be the pleasure of the board.
Motion's been made to draft proposals. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Madam Clerk. And the barrister will get back to us. Commissioner Reeves, sir, comments.
Madam Vice Chair, congratulations. You're now officially a member of the Happily Married Club that I belong to and welcome.
Thank you. It's a good club to be in.
It is. I like to commend the Board of Elections, our Board of Elections Office Director, Jenny, the Sheriff's Department, the Chief of Police, City of Sanford, for helping provide a very expedient and safe vote for November 3rd. I'm very proud of how Lee County handled this situation. It could have been very dicey. It turned out to be relatively calm for the most part, depending on where you had to go vote. But I appreciate what those folks did and all the volunteers that helped provide the service for voting.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all seem stunned. You didn't go to, you didn't vote the same place or what? Jesus Christ.
Broadway was quiet that day. I think there was a handful of people compared to a normal election day. All that early voting was done.
Make my notes part of the minutes anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lovick.
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend, as you get on the Board of Commissioners, you realize you're not just a commissioner, you're on several other boards. So I had the opportunity to attend two meetings. One was in environmental affairs meeting and the basic topic, sum it up, is if there's any issues that can be brought before the commissioners through the Environmental Affairs Board, we'd be glad to look at those for us. And the other one was DSS, Department of Social Services. So I was delighted to be at that meeting. It is, I was impressed with the board there, the meeting, and a few of the topics that would help our citizens that we addressed during that meeting. And some of them are time-sensitive, so this could go out to our community is regarding Medicaid. And it's a transformation period during this time in open enrollment for the Medicaid. I did learn what Medicaid, what Medicare was. We always kind of associate those together as we get older and stuff. But Medicare is actually when you reach the age limit and Medicaid is for, you know, the income factors involved in that. So the open enrollment for Medicaid starts March 15th and ends May 14th, for those that are considering Medicaid part of it. Our code system is used in this process for non-emergency medical transportation of our Medicaid people. They're starting to participate. We're getting ready to work on the 2021 budget kickoff, which Ms. Manor mentioned on that, so that will be brought to us. And it was brought to my attention that they, of course, last year was a bad year as far as we didn't know what was going on. They asked for three positions. We were able to give them one. So they informed me they're going to be asking for two positions this year in the budget. So hopefully, we can accommodate those. And on a good note, the Lee County Department of Social Services, the performance scorecard that they get, everything looks good on that. So, and I like to challenge, we mentioned trash and stuff and different things. I'd like to challenge our citizens. That's up to us. Stuff like that is up to us as individuals and people. And we're good folks here in Lee County and I want to challenge folks to pray for us as Lee County. We got to start right here. We can talk about the US government all we want, but we're chosen for here and our Lee County folks have chosen us and hopefully, they'll pray for us. If they ain't got nobody else to pray for, they can definitely pray for me. I need that. But it's all about our choice and all the way down to trash, it's our choice. And we at Lee County, I hope, will roll up our sleeves and do the best we can for our county. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I took a tour with Mr. Geraldo on all the projects in the county. I invite each and every one of you, if you can make the time, get on his calendar and go ahead and see the projects that we're working on. I do know that during the city, town of Broadway and the county meeting, that we received a lot of accolades from the city on the Temple Park improvements. The North Carolina Association County Commissions had their legislative goals. It was two days. It was online. It was probably the slowest first day because of the interruptions with the governor, the Speaker of the House, as well as the Leader of the Senate. And it was definitely challenging the first day. We didn't get off the first topic until, and it went over time. So the next day, we fine-tuned the online concept and the voting. At least I got to vote and every one of my votes counted. The outlying counties that had the little squirrel on their screen, the window never came up for their vote because of their horrible connectivity with the internet. So that's going to be a topic, internet connectivity and high-speed internet improvements across broadband. And so that's going to be one of the items on the state's agenda. The strategic plan, I sat down with Jamie and we're going to discuss that on the next week or when we have our retreat and we're going to be focusing on what our first year's objectives will be. Had the opportunity to tour Southern Lee High School today, spent two hours. Thank you, Principal Molly Poston, for taking the time. We went through a number of classrooms, online training or online classes were going. It was quite interesting. The school ambassador, I must admit, is Vicky Wilkins and she reached out. I assume she sent you all an email, but the offer is open to you to visit and take a tour of what's going on at Southern Lee. Sanford City Council meeting last night was a marathon. They finished around 10:34 and they still had the planning board to deal with after we departed. The contentious issue was, of course, the city annexing and moving out and developing and growing. There are good things about growth. Brings more people to the county, but it also puts burdens on the various infrastructure that we have as well as creates changes in neighborhoods that some people find disagreeable. And unfortunately, we have Deep River dealing with Galvins Ridge. We have the coming up of the Cumknock Village and as well as the expansion out on 78 in Cortlandt and that area. So it's continuing. There are projects on the plans and every time you get your TRC report, review that because it's, people are going to be calling you on it. I have nothing further. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that we go into closed session per NC General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with our attorney to discuss the matters of the Lee County opioid lawsuit.
Motion's been made to go into closed session. Any discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Thank you very much.
If we can clear the room at this time, once the closed session ends, anybody who's remaining, I'll go to the door and I'll let everybody back in. Thank you. I'll, anybody who's remaining, I'll go to the door and I'll let everybody back in. Thank you.
Mine's about as big, I never wear it, but mine's about that big.
Well, I was out touring the countryside today, so I had to go into a teacher's room.
Mine's not, mine's, mine's not your size, mine's not like yours.
I was little.
Mine's that huge.
Little license plate.
I need to take the candles out.
I guess I know where I rank.
Maybe you're supposed to put it on the back of your belt.
Yours is old, like mine.
Old, it's old.
Okay, thank you. You should get a new one that says chairman.
Yeah, there you go.
No, I don't need that.
All right, we're back up. All right, ladies and gentlemen, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned, thank you.